So our next segment is for at-large candidates. Please help me welcome them to the stage and I will introduce them before you clap. So there are five of them. We have Teresa Baxter, Polly Christensen, Ron Gallegos, Alex Samore, and Gabe Santos. Again, I will go over the rules. Candidates, please pay attention to the lights that are in front of the stage. The green light will be lit as you begin speaking. When the yellow light comes on, you have 15 seconds left. You will then have to complete your answer when the red light comes on. Each of you will have a minute for an introductory statement. At the end of that segment, you will have one minute for closing remarks, I promise. I will ask questions and you will have one minute to respond and we will rotate the questions so that each candidate has the opportunity to answer a question first. The candidate answering the question first will also be given 30 seconds after all other candidates have responded to give that rebuttal. Also, I will, at my discretion, give 30 seconds to a candidate to clarify a statement or respond to another candidate's remarks. If time permits, I will read a question from the audience. The same time rules will apply and 30-second rebuttals again are at my choosing. There will also be a lightning round of questions and I will so state at the beginning and you will be given 15 seconds to answer those questions and I will reiterate the timing at the beginning of each question. Finally, each candidate will have one minute to make closing remarks. But first, we will start with an opening statement. So, we will start with Teresa Baxter. Go ahead with your opening statement.
Hi, my name is Teresa Baxter and I have been lucky enough to live in Longmont since 1992. I was able to raise my son here. He's now 29 years old, lives in Longmont, Mary. They just celebrated their 4th anniversary and they have a dog named Bolt. So it has been a fabulous place to raise my son and to live.
Can you hear her in the back? Yeah, can you pull that mic to you?
Absolutely. It's been a wonderful place to raise my son and have opportunity to live here. I would hope that if I were elected, I would continue to be able to help Longmont to go into the next stage of what it needs to be in a city so that we have more of an economic opportunity for everyone to live here, for my son and his wife and all of the young people of that age to be able to live in our community, have good paying jobs, and have the great quality of life that we've been able to enjoy.
All right, Polly?
My name is Polly Christensen. I've lived here with my son since 1989 in Old Town. Longmont Council exists to be a nonpartisan body to represent, serve, and protect all residents of Longmont. And the council also will be shaping the future of our city. As a community, we are all in this together. When everybody does better, everybody does better, as the old saying goes. The council's decisions must be made by listening to all constituents and decisions should be made based on common sense, professional expertise, and reality, not based on pressure from special interests, either commercial or political. I will listen to all Longmont residents, businesses, and city departments to preserve and improve jobs, education, and infrastructure, and the services that make this city the city that we choose to live in.
Thank you. Ron?
My name is Ron Gallegos. I've been a resident of Longmont since 1987. I previously served on the Longmont Council in 1995 to 1999. We're getting over the flood right now and are having to adjust to it. One of the key, I think, provisions in the city is to have visionaries and that's what the policymakers on the council should be. The flood gives us the opportunity to reflect upon where we've been as a community, but more importantly, where we want to go. Yes, we're going to have to deal with the floodplain itself in terms of mitigation and that's going to cost a lot of money. But more importantly, it gives us the opportunity to stop and reflect. Where do we want to go as a community? How do we get better? We talk about economic developments. One of the interesting statistics was, we are so close to the Rocky Mountain National Park. They have over 3.5 million visitors a year. We need to take advantage of that. Thank you.
Alex Samore?
I'm Alex Samore and I've lived in Longmont for the past 20 years with my wife Amy and three children. For the past 15 years, I've volunteered my time in leadership positions, serving on multiple boards and commissions. I am an entrepreneur and I have built a company here in Longmont. I have firsthand experience of what it takes to create jobs. For 10 years, as executive director of the Longmont Entrepreneurial Network, I mentored over 100 startup technology companies that have created high-paying tech jobs in this community. For the past four years, it's been my privilege to serve this community on council. I ask for your vote and support in this upcoming election so I may continue to serve you for another four years. Thank you.
Gabe?
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having us here. My name is Gabe Santos and I've been your Longmont City Council at-large representative since 2008. It's been an honor and a privilege serving you and this community. I believe you voted for me and hopefully you'll vote for me again because you wanted someone that will do what's best for the city of Longmont. During my time on council, when it came to economic development, jobs, or quality of life, you knew that I would work hard for you to make sure that I would create an environment for those, to allow those things to prosper and thrive. And right now, more than ever in Longmont, Longmont needs demonstrated experience and leadership to guide our community through our recovery. I have a proven track record. I ask for your support, but most importantly, I ask for your vote this November 5th. Thank you.
Okay, we will get into the questions. This is the first question. And since we've gone with opening statements, this first question will start out in the order. Start with Teresa and then we'll rotate on, starting the next question with Polly and so forth. City of Longmont voters will be asked to decide whether 45,300,000 should be raised through bonding for the expansion of the city's fiber-optic broadband network. How do you plan to vote on this and why? Teresa?
Yes, 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 yes. This is forward-thinking, just like the citizens of Longmont did when they developed the electric company that we now have that just celebrated its 100th anniversary. This will allow citizens in Longmont to have inexpensive broadband. This will allow us to be at the forefront of asking businesses to come here. This is win-win across the board for everyone. That's all I have to say.
Okay, alrighty. Polly?
I absolutely support this because it, my grandparents did not have running water, they did not have electricity, they did not have indoor plumbing, they did not have phones, but their children did. This is absolutely an essential service and it should be part of our public infrastructure. And if we support this, it will be built out much faster. If we wait and don't support this, it will take a much longer time. So it's excellent idea.
All right, Ron?
I was on the council and I see Leona Stacker out there and I saw John Caldwell out there. Back in 97, when we purchased the fiber-optic backbone, I think it is just as critical now as it was then. It offers a strategic advantage to our community in comparison to other communities because right now, unfortunately, whether we like it or not, we compete with all the other communities along the front range. So not only is it an asset for our community in terms of operating and offering services to our citizens, but it gives us something to compete with and against those other forces that are going to be trying to draw jobs away from our community.
Alex?
Well, the voters two years ago voted to give us the right to use the fiber again. And so I would definitely support it. It would lend us and improve our, and enhance our ability to attract new companies. Since most of them already come to town because we have affordable electricity and affordable water, this would make us more competitive by also providing fiber services. It's not taken away. I know some people feel that this is competing with the private sector. I think all this does is improve the services from the private sector as well.
Okay, Gabe?
Well, I'm glad we're all in agreement. In 2009, in 2011, I voted as a council member to put on the ballot the initiative to allow Longmont to reestablish its rights to be able to, to allow residents to access the fiber-optic network. In 2009, we did. In 2011, we did. In 2013, we're going to be able to, if residents vote for this, and I will support this, to see if we can establish this again. To be able to provide residents and businesses a better network, a gigabyte. I always joke with one of our managers at LPC, Longmont Parent Communications, a gigabyte to every household. So, you know, folks and businesses can be able to access the internet faster. There are businesses, small businesses, like my own, that need that gigabyte service so we can compete for jobs here in town.
Question number two. The city supports the Longmont Area Economic Council, the LAEC, financially. The LAEC will soon be looking for a new director. How would you like to see Longmont's approach changed to primary employer retention and relocation to Longmont? We'll start out with Polly.
I would like to see us actively recruit more high-tech firms, more forward-looking firms, more sustainable firms, and firms that actually, companies that actually provide a diversity of job, a range of jobs from low end to high end so that people at the low end have the opportunity to have a career path. And I would like to see us actively recruit and encourage firms coming here who actually are interested in staying in this community and contributing to it.
Ron?
I think this is a critical, I spoke earlier about a critical juncture in our community. Now with the change in leadership, there is the opportunity to expand the mission. Not only should we be talking about primary employers, but I think we need to be talking about tourism. I think at least tourism in the state is the second biggest industry and there's no reason, given our location, given how close we are to the park, given how close we are to Fort Collins, CSU, how close we are to Fort Collins and Boulder, there's no reason not only can we emphasize primary employers, but begin to emphasize tourism and grow the community in that perspective. Because those dollars, and as I said earlier, the park generates about $80 million worth of economic revenue and there's no reason that we can't share in that wealth as well.
Alex?
Well, current council has been very proactive in this effort. We are conducting currently a sector business, business sector study to see how we can attract additional businesses that will support the existing primary employers. We have a great set of employers here such as Amgen, Seagate, Western Digital, Intel, Micron, et cetera. So we have a high density of high-tech companies and there are firms out there that support these companies that we can attract to broaden the base.
Okay, Gabe?
With a new city manager that the council hired back a year ago and the economic development director that we have, when we heard that the executive director at the LAEC was taking another position, the city manager and the economic development director reached out to those primary employers. It's vital that we continue to fund LAEC to, again, retain, develop, and attract primary employers to Longmont. I did hear one of the other questions earlier for the War II candidates about Digital Globe. While we are maybe losing a portion of Digital Globe, we are keeping a portion here and it's important to reflect that. There needs to be a closer relationship between the LAEC and the city.
Okay, time. All right, Polly, I will give you a 30-second rebuttal if you'd like one at this point to rebut. Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. Teresa, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I am so, thank you so very much for mini-me in my conscience. That's important. Thank you. I'm like, wait a minute, I'm hearing something, I'm hearing something, what is that? I'm telegraphing, so please, I apologize. Teresa, please, go ahead. Would you like me to repeat the question or you've got it?
No, I've got it.
Okay.
On a whole, I'm in agreement with the other people on the panel. Let's get someone that here that can bring in primary jobs as well as tourism. With that said, it's who are we going to recruit to put into that position? How do we get that body here that will help get us those jobs, that will help get us those tourism? And I think acting very proactively as a, you know, in part of the head-hunting process for the person that's going to be head of LAEC is paramount. That is, I think, the most important piece. Do we hire someone from a bigger city? Do we hire someone from college? Where do we get that energy? What do we look for? Because without that person being the spearhead to bring in the jobs and bring in the tourism, we're just back in the same boat.
Polly, now I will give you a rebuttal. You've got 30 seconds to rebut if you'd like.
I don't know if it's a rebuttal, but I'd like to make another comment. I think when we examine the statistics for the Longmont Economic Council over the last years, we see that in 2012, we gained 164 jobs. The previous year, we lost 93. The previous year to that, we gained 336. The year previous to that, we lost 819. The previous year to that, we lost 384. I think we need to be very careful about recruiting people who have a proven track record of adding jobs.
Okay, so let me do this because Teresa and I appreciate, because the question for me and how do, or would you like to see Longmont's approach changed to primary employer retention and relocation to Longmont? So in that next director, if you all are supporting that position financially, what will you be looking for in that new director? And so, let me start out with you, Ron, in answering this. And you've got 30 seconds to answer this and each person will have it. What will you be looking for in that new director? If the numbers that Polly has put forth are true, you're really gaining or losing at an increasing rate, even though you're gaining jobs, you're losing a lot more than you're gaining. What do you look for in this next person so that you can reverse this trend?
I'm looking for some innovation. We've had the same approach for the last 20 years. It's an up-and-down cycle, I agree with you. I think the next person needs to come in and really do a lot of thinking outside the box, taking a new and dynamic approach, using universities, using current cutting-edge studies. Because I think we've taken an approach in the past that's sort of worked, but we're better than just sort of good.
Alex, what do you say?
Well, we're putting a lot of weight on one person's shoulders where they don't have a lot of control over what happens in the economy. If companies are suffering and sales are down, they tend to want to lay off people and having the best economic development person in the world is not going to save those jobs. What we need to do is we need to expand our base. We need somebody that's going to look and see what additional businesses can be attracted to Longmont to meet our current workforce.
Gabe?
Well, I would agree. Four years ago, there was a talk about, we have to have green energy, we have to attract more green energy businesses, we have to have this. You have, you can't put all your eggs in one basket. You have a diverse job base. When down economies, you, other businesses tend to thrive. You have to have that in town. We're very tech-heavy. There's talk of, there's still talk of a rail park that needs to be looked at and examined.
Okay. Teresa?
I think you bring in someone who's vested, someone that wants to live here, someone that wants to grow a family here, someone that loves Longmont, that understands exactly how wonderful it is. I also agree, diversification is paramount. I think we've got a great medical center that really needs to be built upon that could really help us along the way. And also, let's help develop the airport again to bring businesses in here.
Polly?
Another thing is, I think it would be very helpful, we have wonderful resources at CSU and CU Boulder, and we have tech transfer offices at CU Boulder, we have architecture and planning divisions, we have incredible resources at both those universities and they're close by. We could make use of, better use of collaborating with those.
Okay, question number three. We will start out with Ron. The city offers a number of different programs and resources for the small or prospective small business owner. How do you feel Longmont can continue to promote and be attractive to small businesses? Ron?
You know, we do a really good job at big enterprises. When we were planning the museum and we were planning Prospect, we had a lot of community charrettes. I think the small business community is entitled to a charrette-type experience where we really sit down and for a day or two really become small business entrepreneurs in our own mind. I think this is the segment of the community that we don't hear a lot. They're very dynamic, but oftentimes, it's their own individual struggle they're having to go through. You look at what's happening on Main Street, the vacancy rate is still between 35 and 40%. Every time there's an election, all of us get up here and say, we're behind America, we're behind the apple pie, we're behind small businesses. And two years later, the vacancy rate on Main Street is the same. So we really need to give these people a fair hearing, listen very carefully, and then develop a grand vision and a strategy to meet their needs.
Alex?
Well, we have to keep in mind that 85% of the businesses in Longmont are small businesses that have 10 or less employees. They're the backbone of the community. We talk about business, we tend to think of the Amgens, the Seagates, the IBMs of the world. But what really keeps the economy ticking in Longmont are the small businesses and many of them, small, are still primary employers that bring revenue from outside the state to Longmont.
Gabe?
You know, I'm a small business. I'm an accountant and many of my clients are primary employers that employ about five, five to 10, as Alex mentioned. Five to 10 employees and they're primary employers. I go to their businesses weekly and I always tell them, you can go talk to Doug Benny, you can talk to Sharon King with the Small Business Administration that we house in the city. There are ways, there are, do you need funding? Do you need help? We offer so much at the city to small business, whether it's grants, whether it's business planning. We're doing a great job. Can we do more? Of course we can do more, especially now after the flood. There are so many machine shops that need help and we can offer that.
Teresa?
I'd like to see more knowledge of what is available at the city level for small businesses. I'm hearing some wonderful things the city has and truthfully, I've been ignorant about it. And I would imagine that there are a number of small businesses who are also ignorant in reference to what the city offers. Perhaps there's then some opportunity for education, not only to educate the small businesses that are here, but to bring small businesses here because of what we have to offer.
Polly?
I grew up in a small family business and I also ran my own small business that kept my son and I fed for 10 years. So I understand that. And the other, the other aspect is, people say, well, small businesses don't add many jobs. But they add jobs and they add jobs that are very invested in making a go of it because it's often a one person or a very small business. And those jobs create other jobs that create other jobs, as we're talking about with primary and secondary. We could also do a little bit more, I think, with home businesses. There are all kinds of people operating businesses out of their home in Longmont and we make it more difficult for them. In many ways, cases, they are not causing any impact on their neighbors and yet, we make it more difficult for them because of zoning.
All right, Ron, you have 30 seconds to rebut. Anything you'd like or any comments?
Yes, and I would say statistically across the country, the largest segment of growth in the small business community today is taking place in the Hispanic community. I think it's critical. It's critical that a third of our community now is Hispanic. We need to open the communication links because they've not been as good as they have been, could be in the past. I think they need to get better. But there's a whole segment there, there's a dynamic entrepreneurial class out there that goes about and does their business on a day-to-day business in terms of restaurants and whatnot, but we don't talk to these folks.
Time. All right, here is a lightning round question. 15 seconds to answer, ladies and gentlemen. And I will start out with Gabe. So where did you purchase the shoes you are wearing right now?
Oh.
Gabe?
Dillard's.
Teresa?
Walmart.
Walmart. Polly?
I bought them, I'm sorry to say, in Boulder.
Oh. Ron?
20 years ago.
Marshalls and I bought them on sale.
Alex?
Brown shoes on Main Street.
All right, good, that was for some good comedic relief. Question number four, and this isn't lightning round.
Teresa?
She answered.
I answered. Walmart.
She said, oh, I'm sorry. She didn't answer.
She doesn't wear shoes.
Like, Lou, y'all are giving me a Teresa complex. She answered. And like, I am so never going to forget you again. It only happens one time, that will not happen again. Question four, The Times Call recently ran a story on the flood devastation in the Royal Mobile Park. Now, the story quotes Mayor Coombs as saying imminent domain is not an option and city staffer quoted as saying long-term plans for this site do not include residential development. Do you believe current housing in a floodplain should be moved? We will start out with Alex.
Well, there's been ongoing discussion with the property owners for quite some time for the city to purchase that land to mitigate floodplain in the future. So it's not new news that The Times Call reported. It just became more public once the flooding occurred. It will be coming in front of council for us to make a decision on in the next month or so. And I fully support us purchasing the property because there's a willing buyer and there's a willing seller, so there's never a need for imminent domain.
Gabe?
It's kind of interesting because we're both on the council, so I know the same information. You know, there is a willing seller and this has, this negotiation's been going on at least two years. Having residential housing in a floodplain, it needs to be mitigated, it needs to be mitigated right away. There's been talk, this is in the River Corridor area, there's been talk about the, a grand plan of the River Corridor. And I've always talked about, the first thing that needs to occur is infrastructure along the River Corridor. That is the first and foremost thing that needs to happen in any flood area. We did it on the Left Hand Creek in Southmore Park and I'm glad to say it worked. If we do it and do it right along the Sabrean River Corridor in this area, it will work again.
Teresa?
Yes, I agree that this area needs to have flood mitigation added to it. My concern with the willing seller and the willing buyer is hopefully we're assisting the parties that live in those homes to find affordable homes. That is a section of affordable housing in Longmont. There's not a lot of it, so we need to be sensitive to that. But I would not want to build residential in that area with the potential of it flooding until the infrastructure is in fact built.
Yes, my concern is also, I think it is very good for the, for the city to buy that land to help in the flood mitigation efforts. And it's wonderful that we have a cooperative agreement, I hope. But we do need to find homes for those people because they're among the most vulnerable people in our, in our community and we can't just spit them out on the street, so. It's too bad that we have eliminated the 10% affordable housing because we would have had more housing for them to move into.
Ron?
I don't have a, I'm glad that we're working with the property owner and whatnot. What I'm very concerned about is the flood really kind of exposed a kind of a raw nerve right now. If you look at the number of people who are in poverty in this community and the number of people of people who are really on the cusp there, on the cutting edge between a rock and a hard spot, that's what this really points out. The flood has driven home the numbers, I mean, the vacancy rate now is almost near zero. I don't think it should be a viable option to tell the poor people in the community, well, there's no place for you here, you have to leave. So I think we need to be thoughtful. Here's another opportunity for us to be thoughtful in our approach and reexamine the approach we've taken towards affordable housing, because this community needs some mixed development.
All right, Alex, would you like to rebut?
Yes, I'd like to inform everybody that the city is, again, being proactive and searching for properties that would accommodate mobile homes. The current place was not permanent for any of those people because they leased the space year to year. So at any given moment, when their lease was up, they would have had to move. So the city is currently searching for additional land where mobile homes could be set up, and these people could then move there. And there will be help from FEMA for those that have lost their homes. I believe they would get up to $35,000, which should help tremendously in that process as well.
If I could do a follow-up question, it's my understanding that FEMA, there's a certain amount of time that FEMA has for these individuals who are affected by floods. I think that's some of the things that just statewide people are finding out. Is that something, and I realize we've got two individuals here who are on city council here, Gabe and Alex, are you all familiar with how long these individuals? Because everyone doesn't get $35,000, correct? They get up to that amount, and isn't there a certain timeframe as to when they will get, how long they can stay? Because they can't stay in perpetuity, they can't stay forever.
No, that's true. But I think that's one of the beauties of the response that the city has done, is that we set up that disaster recovery center immediately. And over the last week, many, many people have been able to go and take advantage by applying for that money.
In fact, the, this thing, in fact, staff and Councilmember Witt and other council members hosted a meeting just for the Royal Park residents with FEMA to go over their options and laid out, laid out options for them, what they needed to do, made sure everyone that wasn't signed up were signed up. And the response, the attendance was good, and the response was very good as well.
Okay, thank you all, I appreciate that. Five, question number five. What is a relatively unknown Longmont advantage that is currently not being used to its full potential? And we will start with Gabe. No, we did not skip him. We've skipped no one. That's the Teresa faux pas. Trust me. No, Gabe, no, honey, he was not skipped. It's Joe term.
Gloria, I'll tell you one thing, people get us somehow, people get us confused. It's either...
You and Teresa?
No.
Have you got a secret? You want to tell us?
You and Alex? You and Alex, okay. Not tonight.
Not tonight. No, we don't all look alike. An advantage of the city of Longmont.
What is a relatively unknown Longmont advantage that is currently not being used to its full potential?
Its full potential. What I'll tell you is that Longmont is basically the center of your Colorado experience. It's been mentioned that you can get to Boulder, you can get to Fort Collins, you can get to Rocky Mountain National Park. Our tagline here is, you belong in Longmont. We used to have three breweries in town, now we have five. We have great restaurants, we have a great quality of life here. It's been, you know, we've all mentioned our quality of life. My wife's a native here. When I met her in Washington DC, she said, I'm from a small town in Colorado. I said, tell me the name, Longmont. I've heard of it, maybe you haven't. When I explained everything, and you know, she was surprised. When we got married, I knew I wanted to raise my family here. This is a great community. We've been hit with a natural disaster. We will rise, we took a punch, we're going to come back, better and stronger.
Thank you, Gabe. Teresa?
The arts community. It's just starting in town, the collaboration of the different artists together to, again, diversification, bring in different businesses, bring in tourism. I don't think the rest of the world, even Boulder, 12 miles away, knows how many amazing artists we have here. I think that's something that's underdeveloped. I think that goes hand-in-hand with the new expansion that is happening at the Longmont Museum. We are going to have a 250-seat auditorium. So maybe next year, this event will be able, or the year after next, will be able to be held at the museum rather than at this location. So I think our arts community is not as well-known as it needs to be.
Polly?
I think the biggest unrealized advantage we have is a very diverse community. We have 35% population of Hispanic people who are a vibrant and amazing group of talented people who feel very marginalized and yet have a huge amount to offer, and a huge amount of pride, and a huge amount of initiative. For instance, Nino Gallo has started something, is overseeing something called the Personal Enterprise Investment, which helps people buy houses, helps people through personal investment, invest in themselves for houses, housing, higher education, and for small businesses. And that teaches people all the skills they need to be successful in life and in small businesses. Self-discipline, hope.
Time. I know you hoped you had more time. Bless your heart. Bless your heart. Ron?
I want to agree with Teresa and Polly. Because the last time I checked, I was an abstract artist, and I still am Hispanic. So for those two reasons, and because Alex likes me, you should put me on council. I think, Gabe, hit on to it, the location, when you talk to a Realtor, they say, we're in the middle of a quadrant. We need to take advantage of that location, not only in terms of tourism, but conventions. Boulder cannot have one more convention because they're at capacity. There's no reason, given that we're so close to the universities, given that we're so close to the parks, that we can't draw on tourism and the convention trade. That is like a $5 billion industry. Bring them into the community. Let's pick their pockets, I mean, let's get them to spend dollars here. But I think, seriously, I think it's a very overlooked area.
Alex?
Well, I agree with all the answers. They've been very good answers. But I think one area that's underutilized is our airport. I think with the plans that we have for development in the future, there will be a conference center there, there will be restaurants for people to take advantage of flying in and flying out.
And each one of you now will get a minute for a closing statement. And Teresa, I will start with you. Go ahead.
Thank you all for coming on a Monday night. I know it's not the most popular thing to do. I most of the time prefer to go home and put on my slippers. So thank you all for being here. I do hope that you consider voting for me, but I can't knock any of the rest of the candidates that are sitting at this table. I think we're more in agreement than not in agreement. So I just hope that you all cast your vote. That is the most important thing. Thank you.
Polly?
My decades of professional expertise involve listening to diverse groups and to serve a larger purpose, whether nationally or statewide. I excel at problem-solving and creating solutions that are of high quality, functional, on time, in a budget that's usually of limited resources, and that pleases almost everyone. My experience of growing up in my parents' business and running my own business that fed two people for nearly a decade, I raised my son myself on a woman's wage, and I'm the daughter of an immigrant. I bring the skills to build a creative and productive collaboration with all Longmont residences, businesses, city departments, and community services to preserve and improve jobs, education, public infrastructure, and services because we're all in this together.
Thank you, Polly. Ron?
I believe part of the responsibility of the council members as a body is to be visionaries. Look out on the hill and say, this is where we go, this is the direction. There are lots of opportunities in this community. I think we need to take advantage of them. We need to leverage our assets. So I think we need to put people on the council that will be visionaries, that will be out-of-the-box thinkers, that will be leaders. I think I've proven in the past that I could carry the water and be a leader. I think I listened to the constituents and listened to the will of the people. And I'd like to have that opportunity to serve you again and ask for your vote and your support and your consideration. Thank you.
Alex?
Well, I have a proven track record as a leader, both in private and public sectors. Over the last four years on council, we've worked hard at streamlining the process within the Economic Development Department to streamline the permitting, the incentives programs that we have so we can attract new businesses to town and create new development and redevelopment. So based on that, I would ask for your vote, and I'd be honored to serve you for another four years.
Gabe?
Thank you. It's been, it's been an honor and a...
Yeah, is it on?
Doesn't sound like it. Now it is. Thank you. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve on city council. I'd ask for your vote. And I've enjoyed my time on council, and I hope to enjoy it for another four years. The last several months, well, the last several weeks has been very trying. As I said earlier, the floods have been, has been somewhat an eye-opening. This council, this current council has really embraced each other. I'm really proud of this community, and I'm proud of the council and the way it stepped up and how it has basically congealed. I hope that you would vote for me and put me back on council because we have a lot of hard work to do. Ask for your vote for this November 5th. And as Tricia said, I know you have other things to do this Monday night, and thank you for coming out.
Let's thank all of our candidates this evening at council. Thank you, candidates. And that concludes our second segment with the candidates at large. And of course, we will have a short intermission. Please join us for our final debate, which will involve the two candidates for mayor, and that's coming up shortly.